Welcome to all of you in the audience. We have a large audience this evening. And to those of you watching at home, welcome also. Before we begin the meeting this evening, we've asked Reverend Robert Jamison, a pastor of Peoples Community Church, to give the invocation. Following that, I will lead you in the Fledge of Allegiance.
Lord, we come this evening recognizing that you are Lord, Lord, King of kings. We come submitting our will to your will. Thank you, Father, for the blessing that you have placed upon our feet about our elected officials and all their governance rules. We ask that you come today to show brother love, one for the other. Whatever we do, dear God, we want to be guided by your Spirit, that when we leave this place, we will be better people leaving, and we will fully change. We give our unglory praise in the name of your Son. Amen.
Let's face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Reverend Jamison. With that, we'll now call the meeting to order. And the first item on the agenda is to confirm or amend the agenda. Mr. President?
I move that we delete item 5.1B and that we delete item 6.2 and that we add item 6.5. Am I correct? Does anybody else have a difference from that?
What is item 6.5? Anybody got that?
Add 6.5. It's about the...
Ordinance concerning water and light.
Water and light.
Motion is second. Any comment, discussion? Call of favor, raise your hand. Thank you. Uh, let's see. The mayor's out of town. He is taking his wife to Oxford Clinic in New Orleans for some tests. Hopefully they'll prove to be happy results. I don't think we have any proclamations or recognitions of any Boy Scouts, city employees. I don't believe we have any. Are there any public recognitions on the part of the council this evening? Being done, we'll close the regular meeting and go into the public agenda. And the first item on the public agenda is public hearings. Determination and need to clean private property. Is there anybody here this evening that wants to address the council in regard to any of the properties that are designated for cleaning, mowing? Mr. Parker?
I just need to give you an update. We need to take off number 1234. That's 2511 Pemberton. And number 1241, that is 457 Spring Street.
Thank you.
These have been mowed or cleaned?
Yeah. Okay. All right. I don't see anyone who cares to make any further comments in regard to that. The next item is a hearing on the proposed 2007 budget. Is there anybody here who wishes to address the council in regard to the 2007 budget? Eric? You'll state your name and address. You have five minutes.
All right. I'm Terry Evernathy with Tupelo League Humane Society. My address is 144 Brandywine Circle, Belden, 38826. And I've got two young children here with me that I want to make sure they maintain decorum, so I'm going first and I'm gonna be quick. On behalf of the Tupelo League Humane Society, we come now with our 2006-07 budget. We're asking for $15,000 more than we received last year, or a total of $125,000. The main reason we're asking for these additional funds are higher fuel costs, higher steel costs in maintaining cages, and the desire to have proper staffing for the services that you and the city's residents demand. We received a $10,000 budget increase last year, but you may remember that we also had the additional responsibilities of setting aside funds for future vehicle purchases and insuring our own vehicles. So if you think about it, over a three or four-year plan, about $2,000 a year to insure those vehicles, about $8,000 a year set aside for maintenance and future vehicle purchases over a period of, say, four years, that $10,000 budget increase we got last year is essentially eaten by those responsibilities. And we obviously had higher fuel costs last year, and we weren't really able to address those. We also want to add at least one part-time staff person to increase animal control response time. That's one of the... We've gotten a lot of good feedback from most of y'all and from the city and the people we deal with, but increased response time on animal control was one of the things that we've been asked to address, and we can do that with a part-time person. I briefly want to go over some of the numbers that we had last year, and I'll leave a copy for y'all, or make sure that you get one in your mailbox if you didn't have time to do that in advance. But last year, we took in over 4,900 animals. That may shock some people, but 5,000 has been the magic number the last few years. We're actually down about 3.5% over the previous year. We adopted 1,332, and we feel that's really good. Our dog adoption rate was 29.6%. It may not sound that great, but you have to realize a lot of the ones we get in are already sick and in very poor health. And the national average is only 25%, so we did better than the national average on dog adoptions. Also, just want to mention just a few of the things that we do to help ourselves, and there are quite... There are many. We adopt dogs at Tractor Supply and at PetSmart. This year, me personally, I was on the committee that's working on establishing a dog park out at Veterans Park. We had some input on that. We participated in neighborhood meetings this year. That's something y'all asked us to do, and a lot of people have gotten some situations resolved that maybe they didn't even realize before that they could get resolved. Cans for critters, that's something that Sherri Cochran with the City of Tupelo is helping us with. We're helping the environment by getting rid of aluminum cans, but we're also raising a little bit of funds. Most of you know that we're trying to build a new animal shelter. Ms. Lane Hancock donated some land last year. We dedicated the property this spring. We have raised about $20,000 toward that goal, but it's only a drop in the bucket of what we need, because y'all can imagine what it would cost to build a new shelter. For the second straight year, we had a golf tournament. That raised a good bit of funds. And we also received a car tag, a grant. Y'all, most of y'all have seen these vanity car tags from the... That the state puts out where they give most of the funds for those tags toward a certain cause, and we received $10,000 this year. And that's double the amount we received last year, which was 5,000. Applebee's helps us with pancake breakfast. Walmart helps us. PetSmart helps us. We participate in all the major festivals in the city. Every year, the Episcopal Church hosts the Blessing of the Animals. And we did a Christmas calendar this past year, and that raised some funds. And we also get great cooperation from our local media. So that's just a few of the things that we do to help ourselves. I'll leave a copy with Ms. Muse, but again, I will try to get a... For the record, but I'll try to get a copy for each of you in your mailbox. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Terry. Any other here to address the council in regard to the budget?
Good evening, Mr. Hill. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Jan Willis. I'm the director of our Lee County Library. On behalf of my administrative board of trustees, I'm here tonight to make our budget request. I want to thank y'all very much for the strong support that you have provided our library. Our success is due to the support that we've received from our city and our county. I am proud to tell y'all that in the two and a half years since I've been director, we have grown tremendously, and I have numbers to share with you tonight that'll let you know that the investment you make in our library has paid off. I've got numbers I'm so proud of, and I think y'all will be proud of them too. I started in 2004, and let me give you a good example. Back in 2003, our average library usage every month was about 7,000 folks, 7,037. In 2006, our average visitor count every month is 17,000 every month. This year, we're on track to break 205,000 for the year. To give you an example, that's not only a 143% increase from three years ago, but you could take those 205,000 folks and you could take them up to the Bristol Motor Speedway, and you could fill up the Bristol Motor Speedway, which seats 160,000 people, and you'd have almost 50,000 people left over outside begging to get in. We are used a great deal, and we're very, very proud of it. We have so many other numbers too. I'll give you another good example. At our circulation, we're now checking out over 12,000 items every month: books, DVDs, audios, fine art reproductions. Three years ago, we were averaging about 10,000, so that's an increase of 21% over those three years. Your support makes that possible because we are always working to expand our services and to meet more and more of the needs of our community. What are those folks doing who are coming into the library, those 205,000 people? There's children who are learning how to read. There's adults who are taking GED classes. They are learning the SAT test, the LSAT test. We have a wonderful online program called Learn a Test, where folks can come into the library and they can study for their ACT, LSAT, Praxis, GED. We also have free computer classes for folks who need to learn how to use the computers. Those folks are also checking out assigned reading from their elementary schools to their secondary schools to their colleges. They are taking online courses at our library. They're getting their master's degrees and their doctorate degrees through our public access computers at the library. We're on track now this year to have about 63,000 folks use our public access computers. That's an increase of 66.7%. One big reason is we went out and received a federal grant for $11,000 to double our public access computers. We found out when we did that, we didn't meet our needs. We had even more of a need than we realized. If you come into our library most any time of the day, you'll find our 16 public access computer slots pretty well filled up with folks. One of the most important things our library does is not only do we help folks who already have computer access, but we have free computer access for everybody in our community. It's one of the reasons why I think the library is one of the most democratic institutions in the whole world. We provide that free access all 60 hours that we're open every week. We've got folks coming in from California to Scotland to research their family trees in our genealogy department. Those folks are treated well by us. They spend the night, they spend some money in Tupelo, they come back the next day because we have such one... We have one of the best genealogy collections that they can't get done in a day. We also have meeting rooms. We have had over 300 meetings in our public meeting rooms this year. That's an increase of 12%. We... Of course, we always have people who are checking out our books, our audios, our DVDs. They're participating in summer reading, where this year, every animal from a python to a red-tailed hawk to my three-legged library dog got kids into the library so they could go downstairs, check out books, and learn more about reading. We know what y'all know. Statistics prove that children who read during the summer do better in school once they get back in school, because they keep that reading habit all summer long. Now, public libraries like ours are doing more and more to offer online resources. We've got one of the best-kept secrets in the state called Magnolia, and I've got a handout to give you when I get done. Folks who don't have computers can come into our library and use Magnolia all the time. You can use Magnolia at your home, your office, or your school. It's an online database provided by the state, which lets you look up everything from research papers to consumer health information. I helped a lady this afternoon who was doing research on cataracts. We also help ourselves. In the two years since I've been director, we have received $77,000 in grants. In the two years before, we had received about $37,000. So we go out and we help ourselves. Our Friends group also helps us to the tune of about $6,000 a year to add to our book collection. In fact, they have recently bought a $2,000 set of international country books that are bringing our collection up to date for students who are doing research on different countries around the world. We are asking this year for a 6% increase. Our funding this year was $400,000. I'm asking you to consider raising our funding 6% to $424,000. What would we do with that? First, we would increase our book collection and our audio collection. It's imperative that we stay current in our collection so that we meet the education needs of our community. We would also reward our employees with a pay raise because we're the biggest asset we have. We have a lot of folks here tonight for different reasons and multiple reasons. If you're here tonight and you're a library user, a library supporter, a member of the Friends, or a trustee, or you simply care about your library, would y'all mind standing for a minute? Much obliged. Thank you very much for that. Let me finish by saying that...
I wonder what they were all here for.
I appreciate that. We have folks here for many reasons tonight. They know what we know, which is that our key role is our education role. With your continued help, we can still continue to expand and serve our community even better. Thank you so much for your time tonight. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Jan. You hit that right on five minutes. You were getting close. I'll tell you what I'm gonna do to all of you who are addressing the council. I'm gonna ask Ms. Muse, who's our timekeeper, to raise her hand when you've got 30 seconds left, so I don't have to cut you off. That's a rude thing to do, and I don't like to do it. So she'll raise your hand when you've got 30 seconds left. Reed?
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Jack Ray Jr., 129 Main Street. If you need to keep the record going, Boy Scouts, I was a Boy Scout, if you have one at every meeting. It's my pleasure to appear before the council and the leadership of our city tonight on behalf of the Tupelo Police Athletic League. At this time, I'd like to ask our officers, directors, and some of the members of our Police Athletic League to come stand behind me while I make our presentation. The Police Athletic League is one of the dramatic successes of our city. It is keeping our city safe, and both saves and influences for good the lives of so many young people in our community, for whom the Tupelo Police Athletic League is their best chance, for many the only chance they have ever had to be part of Tupelo's success and not part of our civic problem. Behind me and with me are members of our board and our other officers, our president... I serve as vice president. Tupelo Police Department Captain Cliff Hardy. Behind me, our secretary officer, Katasha White. Our treasurer, Kim Crump. Other community members, including our board directors, Lee County Youth Court Administrator, David Anthony. And, you know, David, and Police Chief Harold Cheff, and among others, and then the youth who are behind me. We are united city employees, policemen, policewomen, community volunteers, black and white, all to give these kids the chance they need to have a good life. A wise man once said that the best school is a log with an adult on one end and a child on the other. Here we have a basketball court with a policeman on one end and a youth on the other, or an after-school computer with a policewoman on one end and a youth on the other. The policeman not serving as only as a mentor, but as a role model, not policing with his fist, but with his heart. It's preventive safety medicine, and it is working. As one of our police volunteers said, quote, "If we don't intercept some of these kids now, we will likely see them two or three years from now on the street in a much more dangerous situation for them and for us." The Tupelo Police Athletic League serves two sets of kids, those sent to it by our youth court and kids who are suggested, recommended by other at-risk units of our community. We have a remarkable record to report to you tonight. Since we opened in March of this year, 2006, we have served 134 youth. 26 of those have been assigned by the youth court. The number of kids that have been picked up or offended while they were enrolled in this program since March, zero. The number of youth court kids who have re-offended since they went through our program, zero. 134 to zero. That's a pretty good score in any game, 26 to zero. We have conducted 11 summer camps. I want to read you two quick examples of youth court because of the privacy laws, of course. Those children are not with us tonight, but I want you to hear two examples of those. Then we have one community kid I want to hear briefly, and Glenn will yell at me. I'll stop mine, because I sure want you to hear Josh. Here's number one. A 14-year-old white male was sent to us from Lee County Youth Court. He wouldn't go to school and kept violating probation. His mother said he had an enormous attitude and a lack of respect. About halfway through camp, he completely turned around. Even by the end of the week, he had a completely different attitude. His mother told us on the last day of camp she could tell an enormous difference. At the end of his camp, he asked if he could continue to come. He volunteered to attend three other camps during a flag football camp. Instead of participating, he assisted the Tupelo Police Athletic League staff with the younger kids, showing them the fundamentals and sportsmanship. He is currently striving during a starting position on the high school football team. Number two. A 15-year-old black male was sent to us from Lee County Youth Court. He was initially charged with burglary of a commercial building and continually violated his probation. He had a, quote, "strong attitude" in the beginning, but was continually seen in our attitude of, quote, "give respect to get respect." He turned his attitude around. By the end of the week, he was very respectful and eager to participate. After his mandatory camp was complete, he asked to continue to be part of the Tupelo Police Athletic League program. The following week, he attended along with his eight-year-old cousin, which he dedicated a lot of time to ensuring that he always acted with respect. And he is now continuing to be one of our leaders at the program, not just one of the youth. This happens to be his 15th birthday, and I told him that lots of kind of courage, one's getting the boxing ring, the other's to speak in public. But if he's still got it, Josh Thompson wanted to say something himself to the council.
Josh?
Good evening. My name is Josh Thompson. I am in the ninth grade and going to the Tupelo High School. I've been in the PAL since March in attending the first boxing camp. PAL has taught me to respect our police officers and opponents in the ring. PAL has made a difference in my life for the good. Before I came to PAL, I was afraid of the police. Now I know that they are there to help us. Getting to know the police officers at PAL has really shown me how much they care about us. Thanks for PAL. Please keep it alive.
I don't think I can say anything more than that. I'll just say in closing that we have a copy of our budget request, which we will pass out to each of the council members to look at, and those of us on the volunteer staff will be glad to answer any questions about that, if y'all have any of the documentary questions. Thank you.
Thank all of you. Mr. Thompson, you did very well. You may be a public speaker someday.
Good evening. I'm Patty Tucker, and I'm the executive director of the Northeast Mississippi chapter of the American Red Cross. Our address is 4127 West Side Drive here in Tupelo. First, I want to thank you all for the funds that you did provide to our chapter last fiscal year. The funds that you provided helped us to assist families in the Lee County and Tupelo city limits area that were affected by disaster. I also want to thank you all for the assistance that you provided during our Hurricane Katrina relief effort. And I also definitely want to thank you for allowing us to use the Bancorp South Center for those 21 days. We do appreciate it. The American Red Cross, of course, is a nonprofit organization. We provide disaster relief. We provide health and safety programs. We provide military assistance, and we also provide disaster education. Anytime disaster strikes, and we at the American Red Cross respond at a moment's notice to help the families that are affected by the disaster to rebuild their lives. We provide assistance to families that are affected by disasters such as fires, tornadoes, hurricanes, floodings, and so forth. We make sure, as I said, that they have food, clothing, and a place to stay immediately following a disaster. Tonight, I want to share with you some of the services that we have provided right here in Lee County and Tupelo city limits this past fiscal year. This past fiscal year, we have assisted 93 families in our five-county area that lost their homes to fires. 59 of those families were from Lee County. 40 of those families were from right here in the city limits of Tupelo. On those 59 families, we spent $57,504. On those 40 families within the city limits of Tupelo, we spent a total of $31,037. We provided these families with the vouchers where they could immediately go to Walmart, get necessities, and also if the families had nowhere else to go, we put them up in a hotel for up to three nights. I'm sure most of you remember in December of... This past December, when we had the Evergreen Square apartment fire. It happened on a Sunday morning. By 8 o'clock, the Northeast Mississippi chapter was there on the scene, providing assistance to those 16 families that had lost their homes to fires. We provided these families with the voucher where they could immediately go to Walmart and get necessities. Also, some of the families had no other family members they could stay with. We provided hotel accommodation to these families for up to three nights. As I said, we stay really busy with our families. We see on an average of one family a week from right here in Lee County that lose their homes to fires. Also, some of our other assistance that we provide, and you got a chance to see it firsthand with our Hurricane Katrina relief efforts, is our disaster assistance. This is where we provide immediate assistance to families that are affected by a disaster such as a hurricane or tornado. Once again, we assess the damage, and we provide these families with vouchers where they can immediately go and get necessities. We also provide eyeglasses and prescription medicine to these families that are affected by major disaster. During the Hurricane Katrina relief effort, we assisted over 2,000 evacuees that came to the Northeast Mississippi area. We spent a total of $997,000 assisting those families, but we did not use any of our local funds. All of these funds came from the National Disaster Relief Efforts. Also, I want to tell you about our military assistance. We assisted 145 families in Lee County that were in need of getting emergency communication to members of their families. We provided CPR and first aid to over 1,912 individuals that were trained in CPR and first aid. So these are the services that we provided here locally in Lee County. So we are once again asking you to please assist us by providing us with $10,000 for the upcoming fiscal year, so that we can assist the families here in Lee County and the city of Tupelo that are affected by disaster. Again, thank you all for your support in the past.
Thank you, Patty. I think all of us were impressed with your efforts to... Katrina victims at the Bancorp South Center, and not only you, but all the volunteers that came down here and helped with that tremendous effort. Who else?
Hello. My name is Deisha Cruz. I'm president of Joiner Neighborhood Association and of the Tupelo Historic Preservation Commission. I'm here tonight to urge this council to make neighborhood marketing, code enforcement, and better planning for Tupelo as number-one priorities for this coming year. I cannot stress the urgency of our situation with every year going by and nothing done. We have too many areas in Tupelo that is evident that people no longer care. When you have that, it is an invitation for irreversible deterioration and crime infestation. Please consider allotting a little money per neighborhood association to be used for marketing, beautification, enhancement projects, or identification projects like new entrance signs or banners. Also, please use the information given to you as a result of our code enforcement project. We presented this in March, and it is now August. If our first step of cleaning up our brewing problems like deterioration is not done, we cannot move any further along with a comprehensive plan to attract residents and tourists to Tupelo. We... Tupelo. We need a proactive approach, especially in areas that have very few homeowners left. This is going to require more code enforcement officers, better ordinances, more support for city court, and better networking between water, light, and planning. Now, on behalf of our preservation project of Mill Village, I will get on my hands and knees, if I need to, to make an impact on the urgency of infrastructure repair in Mill Village. This is one of the most historical, but yet one of the most neglected, part of our town. This area sits right between downtown and the medical community. There is so much potential for residential living and businesses. This should be a healthy part of our downtown. Until we attract people to live downtown, the great plans for retail and restaurants will be hindered. Tourists do not like to come to visit office parks. It is essential to create a need for specialty retail and restaurants in our downtown area for our tourists, and the only way to create a need is to have people living downtown to support these. And back to Mill Village. The Mill Village neighbors have to buy bottled water to drink and to cook with because of the sediment in the water. The old water and sewer lines cannot handle dishwashers, washing machines, and multiple bathrooms. If we hope to attract...to market this area as a historical district, this area has got to accommodate today's families and their needs. We have got to look like an area for investment and not of deterioration. We need better code enforcement. We need more coordinated planning. We need to remember, we cannot move our schools to the outskirts of town. If our neighborhoods continue to deteriorate, it will affect our schools. So we need a comprehensive marketing and beautification/preservation plan for old Tupelo. With gas prices going up, we can market ourselves to attract both residents and tourists. If you look at the news and see how American large cities truly are at the level of overpopulation, crime, expensive living, traffic, and power outages, we appear to be a wonderful place to these people, a quiet, slower-paced, small-town life. Many of these people are now coming to Northeast Mississippi. I work in the antique businesses around town, and I chat with these people. We have so much potential in this town. Surely, we can work together to meet our potential. We all want the same things, a safe and peaceful place to live, an attractive town to enjoy ourselves and to attract visitors, good schools, and a good quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Deisha.
I'm Deborah Yates. I'm the Executive Director at SAFE Incorporated. We are a domestic violence shelter and rape crisis center. I can't give the location of my place of employment because of the danger that it poses for the workers and the women and children that stay there. When asked what we do at SAFE, I respond to that question, "We change lives. We move victims of domestic violence, sexual assault, and their children into safe and healthy homes. We play a part in victims and children regaining their self-respect and self-esteem through counseling and support groups. Abusers move from controlling and abusive behaviors to the ability to form healthy relationships through the Domestic Abuse Intervention Program that we provide at SAFE. Through our community education program, teens gain the knowledge they need to recognize and form healthy relationships. The public becomes aware of the services that SAFE provides and how to tap into those services. Officers are better equipped to respond to domestic violence calls, ensuring that everyone remains safe, and that children are protected, and that victims are referred to SAFE. Healthcare professionals learn to recognize victims of domestic violence and sexual assault, and assist to that victim in seeking shelter and safety at SAFE. In other words, we change lives. Without the services provided by SAFE, victims and children would remain in violent homes. Children would continue the cycle of violence as they become adults. Children would continue to be abused at a rate seventeen-hundred percent higher than the national average. Mississippi would continue to be the state with the highest rate of domestic homicides. Homelessness due to domestic violence would continue to increase. Help us to continue to change lives by continuing your support for SAFE. I have provided you with some numbers, and I don't mind going through the numbers, but I think you can read those at your leisure, or if you see something that you have a question about, I'll be happy to entertain those questions. But what we truly are looking for is continued partnership with the city of Tupelo. Thank you.
Thank you. There are some seats down here. Some of you standing in the back. We'll give you time to come down here and fill them up if you'd like. I know it's going to be tough to...there's three of them down here in front, and there's, I see, two over there. Surely, you don't want to stand up through this whole thing.
Three on the second row, too.
Yeah. Come on down if you want to sit in. Who's next? Who else would like to speak to the council in regard to the budget? Terry?
If I may?
Sure.
Good evening. I'm Terry Anderson, Executive Director, Tupelo Regional Airport, twenty-seven zero four West Jackson, Tupelo, Mississippi, three eight eight zero one. President Hill, City Council members, and the citizens of Tupelo. On behalf of the Tupelo Airport Authority, I want to extend their appreciation for the opportunity to continue the successful coordination between the city of Tupelo and the Tupelo Regional Airport Authority. This mutual support and close spirit of cooperation has led to unparalleled improvement and development for our regional airport. Even citizens without aviation interests have benefited from the improvements in the facilities and operations at that airport. Tupelo Regional is a public-use airfield and is operated in the best interest, safety, and security of the taxpayers in Tupelo, Lee County, and Northeast Mississippi. Since the turn of the century, not too long ago, your airport has experienced unprecedented levels of achievement and growth despite a period in our history that includes a lethargic stock market, a terrorist attack on our soil using American commercial aircraft, a collapse of the airline industry, huge increases in the cost of aviation fuel, devastating hurricanes, and the legacy airline bankruptcies. However, during these past six challenging years, airport operations have doubled, jet service has been added to Atlanta, passenger boardings have doubled, and airport economic activity has provided our local economy with millions of dollars a year. Let me provide you with a brief list of some of our construction or facility enhancements over the past five years. New airfield lighting and pavement overlay, a new fire station, two new ten thousand square feet corporate hangars for Southern Air Carrier, a new million-dollar air traffic control tower with stars, standard terminal automatic radar service. We're one of three Category Four airfields our size in the nation with that kind of service. We've improved our instruments so that we have state-of-the-art approaches at Tupelo. We have a huge general aviation modernization project. We've added new parking lots, and most recently, we started our biggest project to date, which is a new terminal with completion date set in early two thousand and seven. And on the drawing board is a runway expansion and extension project to promote cargo and additional aviation industry opportunities for Northeast Mississippi. Your airport represents more than twenty-five million dollars a year in economic activity for our region. Construction activity, when you consider the economic multiplier effect, has added another three to four million dollars a year to our economy. Ninety-five percent of construction project funding comes from the Airport Improvement Program. Those are federal entitlement grants to airports. The remaining five percent is a match that comes from state, city, and airport resources and reserves. Although the Airport Authority tries to use its revenue resources and reserves to assist in providing grant-matching requirements, when large capital projects like the terminal and runway expansion are involved, we need the city's help to fund. It is through the cooperative effort that the Airport Authority has been able to eliminate the airport's need for fiscal help on its operations and maintenance budget. The airport's fiscal year two thousand and seven budget is balanced without a need for the city's assistance. Our goal of self-sustaining operation has been reached for the third straight year. For our five million dollar terminal construction project, we are requesting eighty-six thousand dollars to assist in the quarter-million-dollar match. In addition, we are asking for twenty-five thousand dollars for equipment to assist in our effort to control wildlife and eliminate the dangers they pose to air traffic and air travel at the airport. This amount is a total request of one hundred and eleven thousand dollars to help our capital budget needs. We appreciate all your assistance and help in the past, and we hope to continue this partnership in the future. I'll entertain any questions if you have some. If not, thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Terry. Anyone else? Let's address the council in regard to the budget. I don't see any, so that will close the public agenda part of the meeting, and now we'll go into citizens' hearings. I appoint to A. Reverend Robert Jameson Lee County Branch in ACP.
Mr. President, can I get a waiver of five inches?
Oh, how long are you requesting?
Five more.
It's up to the council if they want to expand the rules.
Motion.
Pardon?
I move so I move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion comment? All of you are to raise your hand. You have ten minutes.
Thank you. I'd like to call Mr. Jim and Wayne to come start our discussion.
Good evening. My name is Jim Schumpert Casey, and I'm First Vice President for Lee County in ACP. We represent our organization, of course. We are advocates, and of course, and we advocate for those who are less fortunate and those who have some real concerns. And our concern is to see the concerns...that little thing in the middle of the crest, it says "All American City." And I was sitting there listening to us as we did the pledge of allegiance, and I was thinking about these young people back here, and we talk about role models and all of that, and I wonder what they thought if they looked at the council this evening, if they looked across there. And then they looked out here. Look at yourself, and then look out there. And that's what we're concerned about. I guess before I came to see you, and I said, "If I had a bag of tea, I would bring it." Because maybe we could have that...you know the story of the Boston Tea Party? Taxation without representation? Because we don't feel that we're being represented here in this all-American city. There's been effort in terms of tokenism on some of the boards. We feel that those boards represent we, the people. Look at them. I wish the camera...look out here. Now, look back up here. Is that all-American? Does that say "all the people"? Look again. You can't see back there, but I can see if you're standing where I am. Then you look up here. We want a level playing field. As one civil rights leader said some time ago, "We are sick in time of being sick and tired." And we expect some action. We met several weeks ago with the mayor about some concerns, which Reverend Jameson will address. But just generally speaking, we expect some action on the part of you, the elected leaders of this all-American city. And we want you to know that we expect to be represented, and we want some changes. We're concerned about attitudes in the police department, those department heads. We're concerned about attitudes in the public works department, those department heads who deal with hiring and firing and promotion. We're concerned with attitudes and actions in the water and light department. But I think tonight, we're probably more concerned about those attitudes in the police department. You see, because all of us have read the article, you know, where you could be arrested and stopped driving while being black or Hispanic. We're aware of that. So we're concerned about those attitudes, and it's up to you. We've addressed the mayor. I don't know whether the mayor cares...cheered them with you or not, but we addressed the mayor on these concerns several weeks ago, and we continue to get those concerns and those complaints by the citizens. Those people are looking at you. Look, again, I say, "all the people." Look out there. Do they look like you? Look at them. We are not represented in the city of Tupelo. I think maybe that line up there, "all-American city," "a certified retirement city," "is a playing field even," "is it level?" You can make the difference. You know, and before I reel to Reverend Jameson, I guess if all of us could take the attitude of one man in Tupelo that I think that really represents the attitude that we certainly appreciate here, that's Dag Reed Jr. That man epitomizes that line up there, "the all-American city." You...when are you going to pick up that and run with it? We're asking...we're looking at you, and you, and you, individually and collectively, to make that crest up there and that symbol, Tupelo and all-American city, real for all of us, because it says "one nation, unregard, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." And that's just what this is about tonight. Thank you.
We come tonight to voice our displeasures, seem like our...you're neglecting sometime our reject, a citizen of Tupelo. And I think it seemed good, it sounded good, when you can say we got a black on this committee and a black on this committee, and a black working here and a black working there. That sounds good, but I think it's time for us to get beyond tokenism and get beyond saying we got a black. When we look at our population and saying that one-third of the population of Tupelo is made about a black citizen, we are here to tell the council right now, in the city of Tupelo, we are here to make Tupelo what it's called itself, a number-one citizen city, as I have a whole objective. But we don't want to be talking about number-one citizens, I mean, the city, and we are getting treated like twenty-five or twenty-five on the totem pole. Now, I'm wondering right now, as we sit here, and I saw a beautiful mall go by a few months ago, when the PAL program came by, police department, how you brought those black childrens up here and showed how the police department have been so instrumental in bringing black kids...I'm going to emphasize it, black kids, you know, out of poverty and out of sometime, out of being deserted and left alone, to make them feel like they are somebody. I'm grateful for that. I love that program. I knew that program before it came to Tupelo. I'm grateful for that. But then, when I looked at the program and I thought about the man who started, who came up with the idea, was busted down to almost nothing, I looked at that program and said, "Wonder how the peoples up here feel, knowing that this man was so interested and dedicated to the police department. He worked with the police department to get this thing into Tupelo." But I wondered, as I look back over last year, the past few months, that there was an incident that was going to take place in Tupelo. When Tupelo thought there were going to be some gang fighting and some rap fighting and all of that stuff, man by the name of Robert Hall stuck his neck out, went and did research, came down and prevented violence in Tupelo, and the city of Tupelo was so grateful and thankful that he had prevented people from shooting and killing each other, that everywhere he turned, they were giving him gratification. But Robert is just like Jesus Christ, that when he was being held and patted on the back by white folks, he was being crucified by black folks. They were saying that he had turned against them, but Robert enforced the law. He wasn't black or white. He knew the law. He went against his own black brothers and sisters in order to enforce the law. He went against his own black brothers and sisters in order to enforce the law. I remember when the blacks called a conscience on Robert Hall, were going to get him out of the city of Tupelo, but Robert stood up for Tupelo and law enforcement. Now, he's being crucified by the peoples he stood up for. And when I say crucified, I mean, nobody coming to his aid on this side and saying, Robert was a good policeman. I'm waiting on a white man to say, Robert is a good policeman. I'm waiting on that I believe that somebody ought to say, but I don't believe Robert was stupid as low as somebody that accused him of stupid as low, when you know Robert the record, you know Robert worked his way up. Didn't nobody give, he worked his way up. He represented Tupelo well. Everywhere he went, everybody was glad that Robert going, and he sent Robert, he talked about Tupelo, he was proud of him in Tupelo. And all of a sudden, he cannot turn to nobody but his own black brothers. I'm just waiting on somebody now, somebody now that's not black, to stand up for Robert Hall, because Robert Hall is a Christian, good, young man, and anybody know that he made our police department a better police department. And all I'm asking right now, and I obviously, right here, I think it's passed out there, I'm going to write, read this thing to you. The black community believe that there is racial, and we know that there's racial discrimination in hiring in the city of Tupelo, and we're not talking about city hall, we're talking about the whole city public workforce in Tupelo, there's discrimination in hiring and education. I got another second? Okay. And all these other things. Then we're asking the city councils, the city council, to do an investigation and to write a whole demotion, and we're asking the city council to come meet with the black population of Tupelo, Mr. Hill. Amen.
Next item, 5.2B, Mr. Phil Hinton. Is Mr. Hinton here? All right. I don't see Mr. Hinton here. We'll move on to 5.2C. Pardon? We'll wait a few minutes till it settles down in favors. Mr. Walker, give him a chance for full attention. I'm assuming Mr. Walker's here?
Yes.
Okay. Barry.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council. My name is Barry Walker. I live at 4527 Ridgemore Drive in Belden, which is actually in the city limits of Tupelo. I'm speaking on behalf this evening of Citizens for a Smoke-Free Tupelo, and wanted to appear and just speak briefly and give you an update of where we have come from since a couple of months ago, when we spoke to you briefly at the town meeting that we had. We understand that the proposition for the ordinance regarding regulation of smoking in public places has been placed on your study agenda, and anticipation of that, we
...support local laws to make all workplaces smoke-free. Now, that's the opinion coming from someone who really gauges the opinion of the public and is speaking to the restaurant industry. Now, the other really, really hard-hitting bit of information, of course, is the report of the Surgeon General, and we have included excerpts of that with your material. And I want to read just, of course, the report itself is 600 pages long. What y'all have is just a very brief summary. But what the Surgeon General says in summary is that there really is no safe level of exposure to involuntary exposure to tobacco smoke. He concludes, or he summarizes his findings. The scientific evidence now supports the following major conclusions. Secondhand smoke causes premature death and disease in children and in adults who do not smoke. Children exposed to secondhand smoke are at increased risk for sudden infant death syndrome, acute respiratory infections, ear problems, and more severe asthma. Smoking by parents causes respiratory symptoms. Exposure of adults to secondhand smoke has immediate adverse effects on cardiovascular system. And there are other conclusions. I'm about to run out of time. I urge you to read his report. It really puts to rest any debate about whether or not secondhand cigarette smoke is healthy. Since we started our campaign, we've gathered some petitions or signatures on petitions, and I'm going to go ahead and present those to you tonight. We've got about 2,740 petitions, and we think that represents a real significant measure of public opinion. Everywhere I've gone, people have come up to me and said, "We really, really support what you're doing, what the Citizens for Smoke-Free Tupelo are doing." We think if a year from now, if we pass this and look back, if we go and talk to the people in the restaurants, the employees, the owners of the restaurants, and the bars and the public establishments, they'll tell us it's the best thing we ever did. But I want to leave this with you tonight, and we're going to continue to work to muster more public support for this measure.
Thank you, Mr. Walker.
You realize that's almost more people than who voted in the last election.
Next, 5.2D, Mr. Tom Hewitt and Josh Hewitt.
Tom Hewitt, 383.
Excuse me, Tom.
Yeah, sure.
Does each one have five minutes or a five-minute combo? Each one has five minutes.
I would ask you to suspend the rules and give an old presidential preacher 20 minutes, but y'all are tired, and I know you want to go home, so I won't ask that. But good evening. I'm Tom Hewitt, 383 South Thomas Street, Tupelo, Mississippi. I hope, after listening to some impassioned or passionate speeches tonight, that we can all leave here friendly and in good spirits after a good debate. I certainly hope so, because I don't want to have to use the back door after I get to saying what I've got to say tonight. Let me first make a couple of things pretty clear. I am, in some ways, objecting to the smoke preordnance. I'm, in some ways, all for it. I think it's a matter of choice, a clear matter of choice. And I'd like the citizens of Tupelo, not 10% of the citizens of Tupelo, plus nine people, but the complete citizens of Tupelo, to have the opportunity to say, "Yes, we want this, or no, we don't." Now, when it comes down to a building that sometime or other you're going to have to enter, like a courthouse, a place where you get licenses, tags, attend court sessions, service jury, whatever, places that you have to go, ban those now. I don't have a problem with that. I think that's good. But as far as restaurants and bars, I think the people of Tupelo need to speak on this. And if we waited this long, it wouldn't hurt to wait another year or two to where we can put this as a referendum on the city ballot and let the people. If we have faith in the people, now, I've always found that if people are well-informed with the truth and not scare tactics, that they'll make a well-informed decision. I mean, they elected y'all, didn't they? Now, I remember when the elections were going on, I remember reading almost everything that any of y'all said as things you would work for. I do not recall any of y'all saying that you would work for smoke preordnance. You may have, but I don't recall it, and I was pretty well-read on what you did say. So, in effect, the people of Tupelo did not have an opportunity to decide, "Well, I don't necessarily want that person in there," or "I do want that person in there," either way, because of their stance on it. Let me say this. I smoked probably longer than the mayor did. I smoked 40-some years. I quit because I felt like it was not good for me. I encouraged my children not to smoke, to do, to don't. I encouraged my grandchildren not to smoke. But my brother, and my brother, let me go a little further. My brother died of lung cancer. He was a smoker. He was also a welder for 15 years. He also inhaled the garbage that we all inhale out here on the streets every day coming from automobiles. Now, was it the cigarette smoke that caused his cancer? Was it the welding smoke that caused his cancer? Was the garbage that he had to breathe every day caused his cancer? We can't say definitely. We cannot say definitely. It does contribute. Medical tells you, medical studies tell you, it does contribute. I thought it interesting that the, in Mr. Walker's comments, that they, the fellow that did the surveying for the culinary industry surveyed 115,000. That's a lot of people. But that's not even a drop of the bucket of the people in the United States. So, how can you base a decision on that? How can you base a decision on less than 10% of the population of Tupelo? I have a lot of faith in the people of Tupelo if they're informed. I recently worked for and presented to you after a couple of meetings the eight acres to be declared a protection district. I did this through informing the people in that area of what it was, what would happen, and what wouldn't happen. Informed, they voted for it, and they voted to it, to do it. Yes, ma'am. Thank you. I got to hush. It's hard to get a preacher to hush. But let's all take all that into consideration, and let's talk the truth, not scare tactics, and let's do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you for this opportunity to stand before you and voice my objection to this ordinance. I am, as it were, one of the two that smoke. However, I am also the father of a newborn baby son, and thus have given up my right to sit in smoking section of restaurants, to smoke in public buildings, to smoke in my house, to smoke in my car, to smoke anywhere that isn't the little piece of concrete in front of my house I call a porch. Now, why then do I object? We first must get to the heart of this debate. I do not believe that this ordinance will force any businesses in Tupelo to shut their doors. And if you don't believe me, take a look at McDonald's, Wendy's, and the mall. All have banned smoking, all have done very well. On the other hand, I'm also pretty certain that being in Olive Garden for an hour to an hour and a half, depending on how long it takes them to serve you food, does not, is not going to give you lung cancer. Lung cancer is a killer that strikes just like every other form of cancer, without reason, without warning, and without remorse. And to relegate it like this, that it is a punishment to smoker or a victimization of secondhand smoke, and that banning smoking from the restaurants here in Tupelo will save us from it, is the definition of false hope. Now, what this ordinance is about, just like what they read in Mr. Zagat's essay there, is this is about convenience. Smokers don't want to get up and walk outside to smoke a cigarette because, A, we're mostly a lazy bunch, and B, some of us might get winded during the walk. And nonsmokers are really, really tired of the super-long wait time for a nonsmoking table, so if we make the whole thing nonsmoking, we'll all get seated faster. I've recently become a fan of the television show The Revolution, a show that documents exactly what was going on during the war that birthed this country and in the lives of the men who fought it. You remember the founding fathers, the guys who got really upset over the price of tea and took on the world's second-greatest army? I can't help but to wonder what they would think of this ordinance. The founding fathers, in their wisdom, gave us a very powerful tool. It is the tool of capitalism, of free enterprise, the ability to take our money and spend it where we want. It would make sense, if our general public doesn't want smoking in bars and restaurants, then they would band together, not visit those places, and force them to change their habits. How long would it take Pizza Man over there to realize that he's not going to get our money if the 2,000 and so many people who signed these petitions would band together and say, "We're not going to give it to you unless you take smoking out of the building"? And how long would it take the restaurants of Tupelo to realize this? So, why then haven't these people promoted this idea? Why hasn't this been brought up before? Why haven't the members of the city council who have publicly supported this ordinance not said, "But first, we're going to lead a boycott"? Because this bill is about convenience, and it's easier to just get you to pass an ordinance. But the easy way and the right way rarely ever meet in this world. This is an ordinance that lets you willpower you simply do not have, and it's wrong. And you're going to get this power simply because the people are too lazy to allow you to do anything about it.
There's one meeting.
Thank you. "The ends justify the means" should be the new motto of Tupelo. Now, I believe this ordinance will pass. I believe it will pass with an overwhelming margin, and I believe this is a great mistake. This is a momentous time for Tupelo. We can stand in the face of the nation and say, "We do things the right way here. We roll up our sleeves, we do the hard work, and we get to accomplish what we want." And I will be happy to lead this boycott as a smoker and as the father of a newborn son. And if you wonder whether I've got the gumption or ability to do it, remember this. I stood up in the face of tremendous opposition tonight, not because it was easy, but because it was the right thing to do. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tom, Josh. With that, we'll close the public agenda and return to the regular session. And the first item on the regular session, review, approve action of termination of clean private property. With deletion of 12, I guess that's already been deleted, yeah. Have a motion? Do I have a second? Second? Discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. We delete a 6.2, so 6.3, review, approve final resolution granting ad valorem tax exemption to Cooper Tire and Rubber Company.
So moved.
Motion and a second? Discussion? This is pretty much a routine exemption, and they qualify for the exemption. Any other discussion, comment? All in favor, raise your hand. Want to oppose?
No, staying.
Staying? That's right. Next is to review, adopt the standard operating guidelines for the Tupelo Fire Department Reserve Program.
I'm made to adopt this.
Motion second? Flanagan, Mark, care to explain this in public?
Sir?
Do you need to vote on it?
No, 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 we need your explanation before we vote on it.
Just to inform you, the best example that I can find for, the best example that I can find for reservism in the United States is National Guard and Reserves. That's something like what we're trying to do with the Fire Department. We already have an organization in the city of Tupelo that has a successful reserve program, and that's the Police Department. Utilizing reserves will allow us to have a reserve of employees or firefighters, not employees, but firefighters, for us for special needs like special rescue attempts. If we've got festivals in the city and we need additional employees or firefighters to use when our employees are not available, we'll have reserves to pull from. What this policy will allow us to do is hold those people to the same standards that we do our employees. They have to meet the same standards physically, they'll have to meet the same training standards, they'll have to meet the same equipment standards. And by adopting this policy, it will allow us to make sure that they meet those standards. Any further questions?
Comment, discussion? Were we going to check on liability or something? Didn't that come out of gender review? There was going to be a guy you...
Our office has reviewed this policy.
Okay.
And coordinated with the chief.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any further discussion, comment? All in favor, raise your hand. That was the last item on the action agenda, so now we'll move... Six five. Oh, we added one. Amendments to ordinance adopted June 25th describing fixing rates and charges for the And for the public sanitary sewer system of Tupelo, Mississippi. I second the motion. Motion and a second? Comment, discussion? Johnny, you want to...
Yeah, I'd like an explanation of it, Mr. President.
Is Mr. Timmons here?
If we could, Mr. Hill, I'd like for Mr. Mitchell to answer that question for us. Legal issue.
I'll be handing the floor to Mr. Mitchell.
That's right.
I'll be pleased to do so. Council previously adopted these rates that were presented by Mr. Timmons. However, the form that was presented to the council was not in the form of amended ordinance. We're required by state law, when we amend our rate ordinance, to publish those new rates and wait a period of time before they're put in place. So, it's back before you tonight. There are no changes to the rates that were previously adopted. There is change in the form that they're presented as an amendment to the fireworks.
Any further comment, discussion? He did a much better job than you did, John. All in favor, raise your hand. Now, we'll move into the routine agenda. The first item is to review, approve the minutes of a regular city council meeting of Tuesday, August 1st, 2006. Motion second? Comment, discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Next item, review, pay the bills. Bills are paid this evening by Mr. Martin and myself.
We'll pay the bills.
Have a second? Motion and a second? Discussion, comment? All in favor, raise your...
We need volunteers.
Need more volunteers next time, right. All in favor, raise your hand. Item 7.3, review, award, reject bids.
I move we accept these bids, Mr. President.
I second.
Motion and a second? These are pretty much standard bids for general equipment that we routinely have to approve. Any comment, question? All in favor, raise your hand. 7.4, review, approve change order number six for Tupelo wastewater treatment facilities improvement project.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second? Mr. Timmons, you care to explain that one?
No, what you've got before you is actually a change order for two locations. The first one's going to be the Central Public Station that we just completed at the Barnes Crossing Mall area located at Veterans of '78. What we're needing there is three analog sensors. These sensors will actually send signals back to our wastewater plant operations office. It will monitor the hydrogen sulfide gas at that facility, and we'll be able to administer the chemicals at that site a lot better because we'll have 24-hour monitoring at that location on the gas. The second one is, we're installing six new sludge pumps at our new wastewater installation, and these sludge pumps have temperature sensors on them. We'd be able to monitor those six sensors from our office there on under-temperature overload or heating situation that we may be getting into on those pumps. They'll be able to monitor that from the computer there at the office. So, I'd request you to approve this change order if you will.
Mr. Mitchell, is that correct?
I think Mr. Timmons works.
This is the first increased change order we've had, most of them in a reduction in change.
Right, you had a, you did have a $115,000 reduction change order.
So, we're still ahead of the game.
Well, we're about at a washout.
Any further comment, discussion? All in favor, raise your hand.
Thank you.
Thank you, Johnny. Next item, review, approve selection of engineering firm for major thoroughfare program phase four. Mr. President?
I move that we table this item until further study.
I second the motion. Motion and a second?
My reason for this motion is, the council is responsible for...
Mr. President, we don't need a...
One order here on the table, you don't have any discussion.
Oh, to the, okay, I'm sorry.
As far as that discussion.
Yeah, Mr. Timmons? We have to vote on it. We have to vote on it. All right, all in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Next item, review, approve request to declare surplus property.
I move.
Have a motion and a second? Is Mr. Pittman here? Johnny, care to explain that to the public?
We assume that the location we have on Crossover Road, the old TVA...
I don't think they can, they can't hear you. The TV camera, can you come up to the microphone? I know it's a long way, but you can make it. We can hear you, but I don't think the TV audience could.
When the city of Tupelo acquired the area down there on Crossover Road, the old TVA offices, there had, they had a double-wide office trailer put in, and that's where our superintendents had their offices and stuff. Our, plus, our meeting room was too small, so we take, took the old, their offices and moved them down into the brick building, and asked that we be able to demolish the mobile, mobile office trailer. It would cost more to move it than the value. And there's mold, and the floor wobbles with you when you walk on it, so we asked them that we be able to surface it and tear it down.
Any comments, questions, discussion? Mr. Pittman? All in favor, raise your hand. 7.7, move or review, approve environmental clearance for emergency shelter grant.
So moved.
Motion and a second? This grant partially funds operations for the Alpha House, Faith Haven, Garner Simmons, Salvation Army, and it's pretty much just a routine thing. In order for the agencies to receive their grant funds, we have to state that there's no environmental impact on the areas in which these shelters are located.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like...
Is that right, Terry?
I would like to add, this is not money coming from the city. The city's used just as a pass-through for this grant money.
Right. Any further comment, discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Next item, 7.8, review, accept minutes of the Parks Advisory Board and Sports Council meeting of June 13th, 2006.
No, you can't accept these minutes.
Motion and a second? Discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. 7.9, review, accept minutes of Tupelo Historic Preservation Commission meeting of July 13th, 2006.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second? Discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. 7.10, review, approve 2006 budget revision number 10. I second. Motion and a second? Ms. Holcomb, would you care to explain that to the public?
This budget amendment is necessary for four departments in the city that are running short on some funds that have been budgeted, and we need to increase their budget for them to meet the final part of the 9/3006 budget. We're asking to receive $500 that has been donated for the July 4th celebration. We ask to receive that in line six into your miscellaneous revenues, and then we will pass that through to the July 4th Celebration Committee. We're asking to go into the fund balance $172,000. This is for four city departments. Court has asked for $13,005. The police needs $70,000. Fire needs $12,005. Parking rec needs $76,000. And the reason for these amounts that they need is in the court. They need the $13,500 in their other service and charges. They have had several cases that the judge and the prosecutor in the court have had to recuse themselves because of conflicts with the cases as they come forward. We've had to ask for outside legal people to come in and a judge to fill in, and so $8,000 is for that. Printing is $2,000, and that's because we've had an unusual docket that's almost doubled what it has been, so we've had to ask for that money so that he could buy his docket supplies and new ticket books. The utilities are understated by $3,500. The reason for that is his utilities were budgeted at the beginning of this year under normal court service. For this year, we have opened the court office down there at night, and it's being used five, six nights, six, five nights, and then on Saturday. And the reason for that is we're having two nights. We have our DUI offenders that use that, and then the defense drivers use it three nights for defensive driving. And then on Saturdays, we have people that are juvenile and adult that get traffic tickets that come in, and they work off their fine through the court system that way. So, we're needing to increase the utilities to be able to cover that nighttime service that's going on at the court in that building. The police department needs $70,000, and this may sound like a lot, but when I tell you what it is, it's not a lot. It's gas for $35,000, and everybody knows what the fuel cost has been, and then $35,000 for vehicle maintenance. And we did check into the vehicle maintenance, and we've had several cars that were bought that we've had some problems with as far as maintenance, and I talked to the shop, and all those cars have been replaced. So, we no longer have. It was impalas, and they've had a lot of problems with them, and it was a lot of repair that we had to do. All those cars are gone, so we have replaced those with new vehicles. So, hopefully, that's going to help next year's maintenance in that department. The fire department is asking for an increase of $7,500 for their fuel for the rest of the year, and they're asking to transfer from their capital $5,000 that they had budgeted for firefighting supplies, and that that be moved up to building maintenance so that they can use that on some maintenance they need to do on their buildings. And they also need $5,000 on their utilities for, to meet this current year. Parking rec needs $6,000 increase in their gas budget, and they also need a $70,000 increase in their utilities. And an explanation for that is $18,000 of the 70 is for Gateway Park. When we took Gateway Park, which was originally... When we took Gateway Park, which was originally under the Public Works Department, and we gave it to parking rec to maintain as a park, we did not adjust their budget for utilities because during budget time last year, we talked about a well, to drill a well, and it was never put in the budget. So, they've had to absorb $18,000 on the Gateway Park this year that was not budgeted. The city pools has required, or the one city pool we have that's heated in the winter in the Joyner area, has required $15,000 extra dollars in the gas bill to keep that pool heated during the wintertime. They also have, need $30,000 on their monthly utility bills due to the hot summer and having to water, all that they're having to water as far as the fields and all. The community service, we're asking to budget that $500 that has been donated for our July 4th so that we can pass it through in community services on line 16. Total budget amendments, $172,500.
Any questions, comments, Ms. Holcomb?
Mr. President, at this appropriate time, I'd like to place on the study agenda, this well maybe could have saved this $18,000 in the pond. We could place that on the study agenda so we can look into, not waiting another year until we could pay for a well and instead of paying utilities on it.
To have it on the next agenda?
Right, just to have it on the next.
Next, next, yeah. That's fine. Any further comment, discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. All right, that was the last item on the routine agenda, and now we move into the study agenda. The first item is to review, discuss ordinance, amending code of ordinances to add smoking ban ordinance.
Move it up.
Move it up.
Move it up? Next, review, discuss application of Leggett and Platt for an ad valorem tax exemption.
Move it up.
Move it up. Pardon?
There's a...
Oh, yeah, okay. Leggett and Platt. All right, there's one for Gen Light, also on a study agenda. Text, text, an application for it.
Move it up.
Have a motion, move that up, or move it up?
Move it up.
All right. Okay, that was the last item. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move that the meeting would be adjourned.
Motion and a second? All in favor, raise your hand.